Okay. Oh, okay, not far. Yeah, can make a day trip kind of thing.
Ready to go?
You want to sign this for sure? So you have to give it to them with everybody's sign? They can wait a minute?
Good morning. It is now ten oh three, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and Nebraska County Commissioners Court will come to order. Today's invocation and pledges will be given by Commissioner Wanda Watson.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here today on this lovely fall day, we humbly seek your guidance and wisdom. Grant us clarity of thought and understanding as we embark on this meeting. Help us to make decisions that align with your will and bring about positive outcomes. Amen.
Pledgeions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, and under God, one and indivisible.
Well, good morning. Once again, we will start with Agenda Item Number Two in Public Citizens Comments, but before I do, I'd like to say a very big thank you to our A.D., the I.T. and Audio-Visual Department, because the sound today is excellent, and I know y'all been working the last two weeks, so thank you very much. Moving to Citizen, Call for Citizen Input Concerns. Today we have three citizens. First will be Adam Perdue. Mr. Perdue, good morning. Thank you. Please state your name and the precinct which you reside.
Hello, yes, sir. My name is Adam Perdue, Precinct Two. So this little four minutes here can be stopped at any point in time if anybody corrects me, tells me that we've stopped monthly bump payment on the Innovative Transportation Solutions contract. The very issue here is that we don't know, because we are no longer duly bound by any kind of contract, and it's just going to go month to month until somebody cancels it or doesn't. The original contract was written between Brazos County and Innovative Transportation Solutions, Inc., and executed on August of twenty twenty. And the relevant section here is V. Five, Term. The period of performance under this agreement shall be for a two-year period to commence on August first, twenty twenty, and continue through July thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, within an option to renew for three additional one-year terms at the discretion of the county and for a maximum of five years. Unless terminated within the term set forth herein, the agreement shall continue month to month after the initial term period until renewed by the county. Upon county's exercise of its option to renew, both parties shall agree to a budget amount for the new term. In the event the county does not exercise its option to renew, this agreement will shall terminate thirty days after receipt by a consultant of county's notice to terminate. And so the relevant section in there is the sentence that says that this agreement goes for a maximum of five years. There is an original term of two years, and during the overlapping period between that original term and any renewal, it's allowed to go month to month until either the county cancels or the consultant cancels. But the maximum term is five years, and that is through July of twenty twenty-five, which is two months ago. And so now we are no longer spending duly authorized county money. And so I'm asking anybody on the Commissioner, any of the five Commissioners, four Commissioners or the Judge, sorry, or Bruce, or the Treasurer, exactly how and why are we spending fifteen thousand dollars a month without it being duly authorized by the county here in this court? And then how is it any different? I have now spent at least a hundred hours on trip bond, A, work in this Noe's Loop project, working on that. I've saved the county at least seven million dollars, I think, and if you would have listened to us earlier, it could have been up to nine million dollars. And so then my company bills me out at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and so then where do I submit my invoice for twenty-five thousand dollars? Which is no more or less duly authorized by this Commissioners Court. And so I'm requesting somebody, either staff or the Commissioners, tell me what the difference is, or exactly how are you justifying the continuation of the month-to-month contract with Innovation, Innovative Transportation Solutions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perdue. The court now calls Christine Shimick. Oh, I thought you said you were done. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Perdue. The court now calls Christine Shimick. Ms. Shimick, thank you for being here. Please state your name and the precinct that you reside.
Christine Shimick, Precinct Two is where I live, and then Precinct Four is downtown business. I want to talk about some road development in downtown Bryan, but in order to talk about it, I need to go back to the trip bond Prop A, where there was a mention that Relus Campus would have the opportunity to fix, to access Highway twenty-one through fixing ingress and egress ability to enter and exit a property. And this is weird. So the Eagle listed eight bond projects by rank, which was twenty-one to forty-seven interchange improvement, three million dollars. Forty-seven to twenty-eight eighteen, the widening of Leonard Road, sixteen million dollars. And now we see in bryantexas.gov, there is continuing past what's in Prop A, and that would be Leonard Grossbeck Road Widening. So Leonard Road Widening now moves, continues on through Grossbeck to the roundabout at Palisota specifically. That's going to be widened to fifty-four feet with sidewalks. Work on the capacity study has begun. I'd really like to see that study. Finn Feather to South Main, design and reconstruct the railroad crossing. So between the first and this, there is no mention of what's going to happen between the Palisota Roundabout and Finn Feather, but we've got a fifty-four-foot wide road coming in. Third thing, Grossbeck Street Extension. After crossing the tracks, extend a new road between South College and Texas Avenue, aligning with East Thirty-second Street. That one's going to be thirty-eight feet, thirty-eight feet wide, and just juggling the microphone here. And the meetings with property owners regarding the acquisition of rights of way or continuing detailed design will start when the right of way is acquired. Okay, I've heard that before. All three projects identify construction parameters being funding source, contractor, contract amount, unknown, to be determined. And the thing that I'm concerned about is when I pull up the map for this last little piece and draw the line where they say it's going to go, I notice that there's a building, a coffer and coffer building appears to be on that road line, but the B.I.S.D. tech support and the M.H.M.R. office are not. So I started looking. I'm not a lawyer. This is my citizen research. But if the City of Bryan is a corporation, which it was incorporated in eighteen seventy-one, and the City of Bryan issued a building permit, which is a government agency contract, and the property owners built according to that contract and paid taxes this whole time, how does that not qualify as a breach of contract between the permit issuer and the business owner? Why spare the government buildings? What's going to happen along Thirty-second Street? Now, the reason I'm asking these questions is because even though this is on the Bryan, Texas website, it appears that all, that the City of Bryan has to do is add in City of Bryan and Brazos County Economic Development Foundation inter-local agreement to pull the county into this cost. And that's what they wrote with the Mumford Road widening, which we now know was not just for widening and improving the road. It was for creating an entryway for the Amazon to come in. Pathway through Grossbeck makes no sense, so I'm not sure why that's even mentioned. And the whole process of building this whole new track crossing, just...
Thank you, Ms. Shimick. The court now calls Kathy Veens. Ms. Veens, please state your name and the precinct you reside in.
Anne's Precinct Four. I wanted to start out by referring back to the agenda from two weeks ago. It was brought to my attention by Marcy Turner, who unfortunately is not here today, that I may have spoken in a way that led people to think that I believe there was fraud in the community support contracts that were being processed, and that was not at all what I was intending to say. And I want to clarify and apologize to anybody who thought that's what I was implying, because it was not. And it was clear to me from the answers and from the understanding of the process that that is, was not something to be worried about. I did not sign up for item nine and ten, those are the grant applications, but when you get to that point, can you address what those funds are exactly going to be used for? Because there's a lot of leeway there, and I don't know what changes will be, permanent changes to our budget and employment situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Veens. That concludes Call for Citizen Input and Concerns. We've moved to the Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Proclamation Twenty-five dash zero-three-three, proclaiming the College Station Noon Lions Club seventy-five years of outstanding service and commitment.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Seventy-five years is a big deal for a city that young to have an organization that's been basically almost as old as the city. And I know that it was probably fifty years in before y'all joined, but, but, yeah, fifty, fifty-five, six or seven, something. But anyway, congratulations. I think that's a, that's a momentous occasion to celebrate when you have an organization that has put in the work, benefited the community so well, and done it for seventy-five years consistently. Awesome.
Commissioners, any other comments before I read this incredible proclamation?
Did y'all run the Christmas lot, tree lot, the entire time?
Very good. Commissioner Brown.
I've known James since Moby Dick was a minnow, and I know anything that he's involved in is top notch. So thank you for all your, your service with, with the food bank and now with the Lions Club. Congratulations.
We are excited you're here. With that, I will read this proclamation from the dais, and then I will come down for a photograph, and we are excited you're here today. College Station Noon Lions Club Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Proclamation commemorating seventy-five years of service and community impact. Whereas the College Station Noon Lions Club has served our community and communities in and around the Brazos Valley for seventy-five years with unwavering dedication, compassion, and leadership. Whereas since its founding on October thirtieth, nineteen fifty, the College Station Noon Lions Club has embodied the principles of service, fellowship, and philanthropy, engaging in countless initiatives to improve the lives of those in need, such as free eyeglasses and vision screenings for area schoolchildren, a helicopter pad for a local hospital, a community playground for children of all abilities, a summer camp for area for young people with diabetes and other physical handicaps, community cleanups, and college scholarships for area youth. Whereas the humanitarian causes include it but not limited to promoting vision care and fighting preventable blindness, supporting youth programs and fighting pediatric cancer, providing disaster relief, and fostering environmental stewardship. Whereas the College Station Noon Lions Club has fostered a spirit of volunteerism and civic responsibility among its members, inspiring generations to give back to our community. Whereas the College Station Noon Lions Club legacy includes partnerships with local organizations, schools, and governments to address pressing social challenges such as housing, hunger, and medical care that can make a positive and lasting difference to those who have served. Whereas the Seventy-Fifth Anniversary marks a significant milestone in the history of the College Station Noon Lions Club, representing decades of selfless service, growth, and achievement. Be it proclaimed that we, the Brazos County Commissioners Court, recognize and celebrate the Seventy-Fifth Anniversary of the College Station Noon Lions Club, expressing our profound gratitude for its extraordinary contributions to our community and to humanity at large. That we, the Brazos County Commissioners Court, commend the College Station Noon Lions Club, members past and present, whose dedication, compassion, and leadership have shaped the organization and its mission of service. That we, the Brazos County Commissioners Court, encourage continued support for the Lions Club programs and initiatives, such as their annual Christmas tree sales and Honor Our Heroes benefit, ensuring the ongoing success of its efforts and address the needs of our community and beyond. That this proclamation be entered into the official record and shared with the College Station Noon Lions Club as a testament to the enduring respect and admiration held by our community. Adopted this fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-five, in Brazos County, in honor of College Station Noon Lions Club's seventy-five years of outstanding service and commitment, signed by Kyle Casell, Acting County Judge, Bentley Nettles, Commissioner One, Chuck Conner, Precinct Two, Fred Brown, Commissioner, Precinct Three, and Wanda Watson, Commissioner, Precinct Four. Congratulations.
Well, y'all, well, y'all let anybody in. All right. Thank you all. Stevie?
Good to see you, buddy. Got your nameplate. I've got your nameplate. Get it to you.
Excuse our homecoming event we have right now. So, we do have a motion and a second on agenda item number three. We do need a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Once again, the Noon Lions Day Club, thank you for being here. What an honor. Moving to agenda item number four, resolution twenty-five dash zero-one-three to apply for the fiscal year twenty-six formula grant from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to provide improvements to indigent defense services in Brazos County.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. Any discussion?
We got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand last year. Let's, let's see if we can beat that this year.
Commissioners?
What did he say?
They were awarded a hundred and fifty-eight thousand this last year. Let's see if they can beat that this year.
Yes, I agree.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number five, approval of order number twenty-five dash zero-twenty-eight directing salary fund to the general fund for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number six, approval requested for authorization to wire transfer up to six million, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and eighty cents to Health and Human Service Commission for the Aligning Technology by Linking Interpol Systems for Client Health Outcomes Program, intergovernmental transfer for the benefit of participating hospitals using funding from Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Just a reminder, it's a budget-neutral item.
Budget-neutral item.
It does not cost the county.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
This is only a pass-through.
That's right.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Nettles?
No.
No. Thank you. There being no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number seven, consider and possible action on county burn ban.
So, do we need a motion to?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Watson, the second.
Second.
From Commissioner Nettles. This time, the court calls Jason Ware. Mr. Ware, thank you for being here this morning.
Judge, Commissioners, Jason, that kind of scared me a little bit, Bruce, thanks.
You, you brought your usual crowd today, too.
I did, I did. Thank y'all for being here. Um, Jason Ware, Emergency Management Coordinator for Brazos County. We are very dry. Our numbers, our drought index is on the rise. We haven't seen any measurable precipitation in quite some time. Currently, our average for the county is six eighty-seven. On the high side, it is seven twenty-one, on the low side is six thirty-seven. So, anytime you get over that six hundred mark, the chances for wildfire drastically increases. To, in the last seven days, there have been approximately five grass fires in the county. Two of them on Saturday resulted in two structures burning down. One structure being totally destroyed, the other one was a, was damaged. However, both those structures were abandoned structures, so, and they were on the west side of the county. I'm going to give kudos to all four of our county fire departments for the, for the quick responses that they've been showing to these fires and, and being able to control them quickly. Even in these, you know, dry times, these, all, all these fires together have only contributed to about ten acres lost. So, they've been doing a very good job getting on there, controlling them quickly. With that being said, all four county fire chiefs are in agreeance that we do need a burn ban to be in place. And it is a recommendation from Brazos County Emergency Management as well that we go ahead and pass a burn ban.
I believe you said one of those chiefs used fiery language to ask for a burn ban.
That is correct. They were very, they were really wanting the burn ban, so we'll leave it at that. But it is, is my recommendation, along with the four county fire chiefs, to pass a burn ban today.
Commissioners, any discussion?
That's one of the highest overall averages I've seen in a county. I mean, we've had dry spots, but an overall average, that's, that's very high. I would be in favor of passing it.
Thank you. We are in need of a rainfall, and at this time, I think it is appropriate to implement a burn ban. Commissioners, any further discussion?
No.
And the burn ban, do you have specific details?
So, the, as far as the burn ban, the way it's written, is there, obviously, are no outdoor burning there. If you're welding, you need to contact the non-emergency number at the dispatch center, three-six-one-three-eight-eight-eight, to report that welding project. You need to have, you need to have water on site to be able to extinguish any spotfires. You need to have a spotter as well. As far as the burning, you can still use your barbecue pits, as long as they're completely enclosed and contain all sparks, but do not leave it unattended. And the vegetation needs to be cleared out from around it and underneath it as well.
Thank you for that clarity. That's very important. Commissioners, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number eight, agenda number eight will be withdrawn. Number, agenda item eight will be withdrawn. We will now move to agenda item number nine, approval requested for the grant agreement with the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts for Rural Prosecutor's Office Salary Assistance Program, IA-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-one-six-three, the county attorney.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. We have some discussion. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir. I want us to look at this with a John DeSai. I'm in favor of this, but, but you need to remember, forty-eight percent of our entire budget is because of, of unfunded mandates that come down from the state. And you know that from your service, and I know that from my service. Of course, we never voted for any of those unfunded mandates.
Certainly not, yes.
But, in the case of this grant, it says, "The agreement is subject to termination or cancellation either in whole or in part without penalty to Comptroller if such funds are not appropriated or becoming available." So, we just need to make sure that we understand, when we apply and get one of these grants, that they may drop the grant in two years or four years, but we continue with that expense. So, as long as we understand that, then that's my argument.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioners, Commissioner Nettles?
So, our county attorney does a great job. I was a little disappointed at our state legislature cutting our county, elected official county attorney's salary this year. I know that this can't be used for him, but we need attorneys here in Brazos County. We, we have a vacancy, a, a lack of people moving to practice here, and so hopefully this will help us attract the right folks to come here. And of course, then, once they get here, they're never going to want to leave. But the reality is, we need good lawyers representing the county, representing the county's interests.
Thank you, Commissioner Nettles. Commissioners? Mr. Gray, would you like to speak, or?
I'll get the interview kind of question, but I will say...
Please approach.
I will say that I do agree with Commissioner Brown that this is a, it's not a guarantee. And this is something that I brought up to the president of TDCAA and a couple of other folks when we were discussing this. My concern, of course, would be that, you know, this is a supplementary salary situation. It, it's only to be paid to assistant county attorneys, investigators, and victim assistance coordinators. And so, I, as we were going through this process, and this is, I think, the third year that we've, we've been able to get this grant, you know, I expressed my concern that, you know, folks get used to this, you know? This is part of their pay. They, they base, you know, their bills and things like that off of that. And, you know, my preference, and I, I tried to, to establish this, was to have more of a bonus, a lump sum, you know, from time to time. And I, I was unsuccessful with that. I also believe that it should be dispersed throughout, or at least an ability to disperse that throughout the entire office, because I've got about eight employees, and that concerns me, that are not, do not get any of those funds. And so, the funds are basically, the, the reason that these are supplied or given to us via grant is to keep good people and to try to get additional new people. Because again, prosecutors are not known to make tons of money. That's not why we're in it. We're here to seek justice, and, and, and my office does a great job of that. And, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to the, the grant, or pretty much any questions you have in regards to the office I'm here.
Thank you, Earl. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gray?
No.
Thank you for stepping forward.
You bet. Thank you all.
Agenda item number nine, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number ten, approval requested for the grant agreement with the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts for the Rural Sheriff's Office Salary Assistance Program Award, IA-dash-zero-zero-zero-two-zero-four-seven, Sheriff's Office.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Same remarks that I had last, last time.
Copy and paste, the same concerns.
Yeah, copy and paste, please.
Sheriff Dickey, would you like to approach, or you? Commissioners, do you have any questions for the sheriff?
No.
There being none, we will move to a vote. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number eleven, approval of amended sheriff and constable fees per local government code one-one-eight-point-one-three-one, amended to include new fee approved in Senate Bill thirteen thirty-three from the eighty-ninth legislative session, new fees to be effective January first, twenty-twenty-six.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number twelve, approval requested from the Sheriff's Office, Jail Medical Division, for payment of four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to Dent Trust Dental with fiscal year twenty-twenty-five funds. A purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number thirteen, approval requested from Brazos County Sheriff's Office, Enforcement Division, for payment of three hundred and five dollars to teacs for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five funds. The expense exceeded the amount of the existing, existing blanket purchase order.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number fourteen, approval requested to issue U.S. bank credit cards to the following employees with credit limit for each of one thousand dollars for authorized travel, conference, and departmental expenses.
Move for approval, A through E.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Judge, I just want to thank Charles. I know he's here some, he's back there in the crying room, I think, but I just wanted to congratulate him and thank him for this new, these new credit cards. We no longer use the old credit cards. I wish he had a picture of it, because he sent me a picture the other day.
You're not even giving him a plug anymore. I like that.
No, I think it's wonderful. I'm so excited.
Any further discussion?
I mean, we can't not say Diners Club.
Thank you.
No more Diners Club.
In the cry room, oh my goodness.
Commissioners, thank you. We have a motion and a second on agenda item number fourteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. We will take agenda item number seventeen out of order before item number fifteen, if you're following along. Moving to agenda item number seventeen, request from the county judge for the following personnel change with effective date of October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. This change will decrease information technology administration's salary and wages by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, benefits by forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and three, and increase project management administration by the same amount.
Move for approval, A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Budget-neutral item again.
Thank you for that clarity, Commissioner Conner. Commissioners, any other further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Moving back to fifteen, approve, approval of the following job description.
Move for approval, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Back in order on number sixteen, request from Roden Bridge for the following personnel changes with effective date as of October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. This change has no impact to the Roden Bridge fiscal twenty-twenty-six budget.
Move for approval.
A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number eighteen, approval of contract renewal, OAG number C-dash-zero-two-six-four-five, associated with previous approved contract number five-two-zero-two-five-dash-SYZ Brazos County with SciLogist Gov. Incorporated participating entity services agreement for the statewide automated victim notification service renewal period as of September first, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. The ayes have it. Agenda item number nineteen, approval of the following community support contracts for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Move for approval, A through G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
This, this has always bothered me because, because, and I believe in every one of these organizations, but the thought by so many of them is, let's go to the county and get a big check. And it's easier to, to get a big check from the county than it is to go out and raise it within the community. And I hate spending taxpayer dollars on things that, if you individually believe in these different things, then give to them. But it shouldn't be the county's responsibility to always open up our piggy bank and give to, to different organizations. That's all.
I disagree, because I've been to fundraisers for these events, some of these organizations. They are just seeking funding where they can seek it, and they serve the whole county. Not, I mean, the, the, what they, what they offer to the county also helps us with the growth of the county. The arts help us, the transit help us, helps us, the food bank, the need for the food bank, it has grown exponentially. As things are changing, the Salvation Army, I understand, and I don't have a problem with the county being a part of that. It is a public purpose, there is a great need, and therefore, we are not the only ones that are donating. I can say, working with a couple of nonprofits, that donations are down because the economy is changing and people have less to give. But I know for a fact that a number of these organizations do do fundraising, they have donors, but the, the, it's changing, but I think the county should be a part of that. I am a part of some of these organizations individually, personally, and therefore, I disagree with you that, that you're making the assumption that they don't do, they don't go out and seek and have events to do fundraising.
I'm not, I'm not making that assumption. What I'm saying is, I was on the food bank board for fifteen years, and the food bank never came to this county during those fifteen years and asked for money. They have big events year-round to, to raise food and to raise money. And all I'm saying is, I'd rather our local population give to what is important to them and get the tax write-off, but when we give it, we're giving away money that belongs to the taxpayers. And I just have a, I've always had a problem with that.
Well, and I...
Commissioner Nettles?
I certainly echo some of those concerns, but my understanding is those, these items, A through G's, are not donations, but part of community support contracts, which we're paying for certain services that these folks are going to provide us. are not donations, but part of community support contracts, which we're paying for certain services that these folks are going to provide us. And they're being, going to be held accountable for those performance under those contracts.
Right.
So I think it's, while I, I understand your concern, I don't consider these donations, because we're, the county's getting services, and we're contracting for those services.
Yes, and it falls under the, the account, the county being allowed to do it for a public purpose. Because of the purpose and the, what they, they, what, their mission in, for the community and for the county is what they, what they do for us, I'm telling you, ha- being able to have an arts council, the, the food bank. I was at an event last week, last night, where the food bank also received a significant donation. And she talked about the, how need, how, how great the need is, they're seeing more and more people using that resource. It is a public need, and therefore, I think we should be a part of that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, any further discussion? On agenda item number 19, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 20, approval requested from the purchasing department to, declare a list of surplus property as salvage in accordance with local government code 2263.152 and authorized destruction of other means of disposal.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 21, approval of contract number 25 dash 116 indexing and imaging with DLT for Brazos County Clerk's Office. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 22, award of RFP number CIP 25 dash 538 phone system replacement countywide recommended award, Bridger Systems LLC.
Move approval, I am so excited about this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Wa- oh, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir. In the future, I'd like to have a listing of everybody that, 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 uh, applied to get this business. Uh, when we just get a one sheet and we're spending $613,541, it gives me pause that we need to know a little bit more about the background.
Duly noted.
Well, I think that was in the back-
Nettles?
I, I believe that was in the backup documents.
It's in, it's attached to the document, yeah.
I didn't see anything, so.
Commissioner Watson, did you have a comment before?
Nope, I'm just cheering the back-
Mr. Went makes his way to the podium.
We're coming into the 21st century.
With a sport coat.
We have a, we typically, as a common practice, attach the tabulation sheet that has a, uh, all of the vendors that reply to that, as well as their scores that they receive for that, Commissioner. So, I'm, I'm trying to pull it up right quick, but.
Is this going to be better than the tin can and string that we're using now?
Yes.
I think we could buy with what we're doing for another decade.
Please, yes.
Commissioner Brown, the last, the last attachment on the agenda system contains a tabulation sheet. I believe there were 16 companies that submitted for this.
Okay.
Uh, for various reasons, some of them were, uh, not considered further, uh, for incomplete information. They didn't meet the requirements that we required, uh, for them to submit, but they should all be in here.
I only had, I'm, I'm, I, I believe you, all I had was just a one sheet, so.
Yes, sir.
I'll let him borrow my iPad.
Yeah.
Mr. Went, thank you for that. Commissioners, thank you for the discussion and understanding. We have a motion and a second on agenda item number 22. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 23, consider and take action on Brazos Wi-Fi utility permit to directional bore fiber conduit under the following county roads and precinct one.
Move to approve A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Number 24, request for approval for the final plat of Wixon Lake Estates lots 1R1, 2R1, and 2R2, Block 1, 37.14 acres, Eli Wixon survey abstract 2236, and Thomas Bowman survey abstract 72, Brazos County, Texas. Site is located in precinct two.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Moving to agenda item number 25, consider and take action on the Comcast utility permit to directional bore fiber optic conduit under the following county roads and precinct four.
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 26, consider and take action on the Frontier Communications Utility Permit to Directional Bore Fiber Conduit within the right of ways and construct road bore, bores under the following county roads and precinct four.
Move approval, A through E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 27, tax refund applications for the following overpayments, A through E.
Move for approval, A through E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 28, budget amendments.
Move for approval, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 29, personnel change of status.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Agenda item number 30, payment of claims.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. We will jump over items 31 and 32, moving to acknowledgements on agenda item number 33, acknowledgement of monthly report from the county auditor for July 2025. Agenda item number 34, there was a typo, so please listen carefully. Acknowledgement of 2025, 2026 budget to actuals as of the fu- as by the fund as of October 6, 2025. There was a typo that said 2024, it is 2025. Acknowledgement of the 2025, 2026 contingency budget to actuals by the fund as of October 6, 2025. Once again, merely a typo in 2024, which is actually 2025. Moving to agenda item number 35, another change in Brazos County Commissioners Court. We will move, let the sheriff and juvenile speak on the end of the month, but the first of the month. Now we will hear from our Brazos County District Attorney, and the court is pleased to see Mr. Parsons.
Who, who was also a Lions Club member.
He wasn't as proud as I thought, it took him a while to get there for the photo.
A Lions Club member who is also the district attorney, I think, make sure you get it in the right regard.
He was all the way back in the cry room.
Jarvis, thank you for being here, and thank you for willing to present each week, month, once a month in court, and we're glad to have you.
Absolutely, so what I wanted to do just real quick is just kind of talk, just kind of give a broad overview, and then what I'll do every month is come with some monthly updates and kind of share a couple of personal stories. And so, from January of 2025 to now, and just ran the numbers. Um, the DA's office has disposed of, according to the Odyssey reports, 2,995 cases. So those are felony cases, those are also misdemeanor cases who have an attached felony. So if a person has, uh, let's assume they have, uh, fentanyl, but they also have marijuana on them, that's a misdemeanor level marijuana. Both of those cases, through agreement with the county attorney, come up to our office for judicial economy, so that the lawyers and defendant don't have to go to two different places, it saves the defendant money, saves the county time. And so, 2,995 of those cases, um, were disposed of from January 1 through yesterday. Um, but, you know, those are just numbers, just talk about a couple of stories. In the last week, we've had a couple of cases come through. Uh, we had one defendant, I think his name was Jarvis Martin, um, was convicted of aggravated sex assault of a child, um, and was sentenced to 44 years in prison. It was a brave 12-year-old, um, uh, young woman who came through ex- um, and withstood weathering cross-examination uh, from defense counsel, and a jury came in, believed her, and sentenced her, um, sentenced her, uh, defendant appropriately. Um, and so those are the kind of cases that we see where, uh, we, you know, going through this hard thing of a trial, um, it's a hard thing on victims, it's a hard thing on families, but, uh, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and there is a little bit of healing, um, a small part of healing that we can play in that process. Um, we also had an individual who was trafficking in about five kilos of cocaine here in this community, which is a lot for our community, he was sentenced to 45 years in prison, um, Mr. Domingo Galvan. And we also had one, it was a little bit different, of the trial, um, an individual who was assaulting jailers in our, in our jail. And his name was Joseph Sweet, and not only was he assaulting them, it was constant harassment and barrage of threats and awful, anything you could think of that is awful that both male and female jailers have to experience, he did it. And did it, it's, it was just a constant thing. So he was finally, we got him to trial, um, he was convicted very quickly, and Judge John Brick sentenced him to the maximum of 10 years in prison at that time for not just the crime that he committed, but also all the other things that happened that were above and beyond, that his time and his experience in jail and how he made that experience very horrible for the other people who work here. Um, along with that, we're just, not just doing the work inside, we're also out in the field. Uh, we have started our 13th Citizens Prosecutor Academy, uh, which is going on right now, so we're meeting-
Congratulations.
We, thank you, we're meeting every Tuesday, um, with that, uh, through the fall. And we also, I was out at the A&amp;M Consolidated talking to citizen, sorry, to students, young drivers. Um, there is a new law that passed in 2019 that mandates talking to them about citizen officer interactions. And the reason we do that is so that we don't have what I would call miscalculation. I.e., the citizens don't know what their rights are, and they don't know what the authority of the officer is. And so this was given to them in a video, but we wanted to enhance it, and so we go in, I go in with, um, an officer, this time with Detective Isaiah Vasquez from Colossation PD, to talk about officer-citizen interaction so that everybody knows what the rights of the officer are and what the rights of the citizen are. And so when we have those things, and things that are, um, easily misinterpreted are not interpreted. For example, we talk about the authority of the officer to, um, to order you out of your vehicle. A lot of people don't know that, and so when they see that, they think that they're being harassed. And so we talk about that, and the reason why that's the case, and both officers and, uh, and myself kind of walk through some of those scenarios. But we also get a chance to answer any questions that they may have had, and these 18-year-olds, these seniors, have a lot of great questions. So I got a chance to talk about 500 seniors, um, about that, and we think that these types of situations help to avoid bigger problems later on. And so it's worked out well, we've been doing it for the last three years, also talking to the English classes about the law and how victims and, and defendants, um, uh, move in the system. And many times we have to deal with people who may not be telling the whole truth, and how we deal with those things, and how does justice coincide with that. So just a little bit what we've been doing over the last month, um, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to take them. Otherwise, I'm going to get out of your hair, or proverbial hair, so.
Jarvis, thank you so much for being willing to present every week, we appreciate that very much.
And I can say that I participated in the DA at Academy, thoroughly enjoyed it, long days, but I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I encourage any citizen that wants to know how the DA's office run to participate in his next class that he offers. It is really, it's really informative, and it, having the appreciation for what you do and how hard your people work.
Absolutely free and we will keep, so.
Thank you for that. Agenda 36, monthly report from the Brazos County Public Defender's Office. Nathan, thank you for being here and willing to keep us up to date on what's going on in your office. We are so glad to have a public defender's office now.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners. Um, in the public defender's office, we, uh, represent a lot of our county's forgotten people. We do that holistically as well, and so, um, most of our clients are afflicted by poverty, serious mental illness, addiction, uh, or a combination of those three things. And so we represent them in court, uh, dealing with the charges that they might be facing. In addition to that, we try to plug them into already existing, uh, resources in the community, including drug rehabilitation, including, uh, counseling and family therapy, um, and, and other resources as well. We are, I, I pulled some numbers for you as well, since this is our first monthly report, I'll, I'll focus on some numbers. In fiscal year 2025, we received 898 cases, uh, from our courts, and we disposed of 681 cases, that includes felonies and misdemeanor offenses. Those cases included, uh, one non-death penalty capital murder case, uh, that, that came through the public defender's office. Currently active cases, uh, we have 577 active cases. Those are spread out among 431 clients, uh, 329 of those are misdemeanors, 226 of those are felonies. And we currently are carrying 17 appellate matters, uh, the def- the defense side of the, of appellate matters for, uh, for the county as well. Just to give you an, an idea of the cases that we take in each month, uh, in September 2025, we received 30 new felony appointments, 70 new misdemeanor appointments. We disposed of 20 felony cases and disposed of 36 misdemeanor cases as well. You, you may not know this, but the public defender's office represents clients once we have received a court order to do so. And so, uh, we, uh, citizens can't come in and retain the public defender's office. In fact, the only way to be represented by the public defender's office is to receive, uh, an order from, uh, our courts appointing us. And so, uh, we work with the courts diligently to make sure that we have enough cases coming in for me to keep, uh, my lawyers busy and to keep me a little busy myself. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Nathan, thank you so much. Commissioners?
Great, great job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Watson? Nettles? Connerly? Nathan, thank you so much for be- willing to do this. With that, we will move to agenda item number 13, announcements of interest and possible future agenda topics. Commissioner Nettles.
So, the Brazos Valley Fair and rodeo's going on. It's one of the best entertainment dollar values you can have, please go out and visit them. This Saturday, Brazos Valley Care is a nonprofit organization that is designed to help veterans in our county is having their annual hunt for heroes out at the Walton Ranch. If you have an interest in doing that, I will be out there, you can go onto their website and, um, probably buy one still. Uh, it's a great event, and raises a lot of money to help our local veterans. And then finally, Saturday, the Fighting Texas Aggies going to Fayetteville, hopefully to beat the heck out of the pigs.
Very good. Commissioner Connerly.
Just, uh, just that, I was going to talk about the fair, but I think you are too, so I'm, I'm going to pass.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir, I'd, I'd like to request that we have a workshop on all open consulting contracts, including ITS.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir.
I think Aubrey wrote that down for us.
Commissioner Watson.
By the time you get to me, all the, all the local things that I'm aware of have been announced, and I apologize, I'm a little creepy today, so.
Well, we hope you feel better. My only plug was for the fair. The fair will be this, the 14th through the 19th, culminating with Sammy Kershaw on Saturday night. We hope to see you all out there, it is the Brazos County Fair. We are going to take an active interest from here on out, because it should be the best fair in central Texas. So we hope to see you out there this weekend. Sammy Kershaw may bring you back in time a little bit.
And it is well attended, I was pretty impressed, you know, I, I was not a county fair person until I became a part of the county. And, um, Charles is heavily involved out there, so I look for him, I mean, he just multitasked on a bunch of stuff, so he is actively involved.
He's going to get you parked quick and fast.
Yep.
But for more information, go to brazoscountyfair.com for any agenda or items or times of concert shows or anything for the children, but they do provide a lot of opportunity for your children this weekend, since we are in Fayetteville, and you have an open Saturday to enjoy Brazos County at its finest. With that, it is now 10:57, and we will recess into executive session. There will be agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F. For agenda item number A, we will need Aubrey, Jennifer, Rayanna, Nina, Bruce, and Ed. Agenda item number B, Aubrey, Jennifer, Rayanna, Bruce, and Ed. Agenda item number C, Aubrey, Bruce, Ed, Trevor, Prothena, and Charles. Agenda item D, Aubrey, Bruce, Ed, Kim, and Charlene Haydinger. Agenda item E, Aubrey, Bruce, Ed, Prothena, Joe, Bill, and Bill. And agenda item number F, Aubrey, Bruce, Ed, Prothena, Joe, and Bill. At this time, it is 10:58, we will recess into executive session. Oops, excuse me, we're back in session. Bruce?
Two things, uh, one is on item C and D, the contract, I have submitted my determination that negotiating open court would be detrimental to the county, that's been filed with staff. Uh, and I need you all to unanimously vote to go into executive session on those items. And secondly, if we could take D first- And secondly, if we could take D first, we have an outside guest for D who's traveled to be here this morning.
Correct. So with that being said, we need a motion?
Need to approve A, is it B and C? B and D?
B and D.
No. C, Charlie and Delta.
C and D, excuse me, we have a motion for C and D. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. We will now convene an executive session at ten fifty-nine.
I don't like.
It is twelve twenty-nine. The Brazos County Commissioners Court has reconvened after executive session. There is no action at this time. Commissioners, any points of reflection on today's Commissioners Court? There being none, we are now adjourned.